Good morning. Today is Tuesday, January fourteenth. This is a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Madam Court, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboen.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Robert Thayer.
Here. All five members are present. We're ready to conduct business today. At this time, y'all rise for invocation from Pastor Robert Thayer.
I don't know about that. Take away the pastor part.
I get to do all the chores.
Yeah. Uh, please bow your heads. Heavenly Father, Lord, as we gather here this morning and you're amongst us, I just ask that you go before the decision makers here and, and, and all those that are represented, those who come to the mic. Just pray you're, you're spared upon each of us and, and, and through this time as we conduct business. And Lord, then as we leave, I just ask that you set your hedge of protection around all of us that are, that are gathered, all of our employees, that you'd protect us, keep us safe. And, uh, and Lord be with the families that are, uh, impacted by these wildfires down in Los Angeles. We know that this is not easy time and there's a lot of confusion, but, but through this, we know that, that, that you are there amongst us and we just ask that you, uh, throw your protection amongst those down there who are, who are in desperate need. And we just give this to you in your son's name, we pray, amen.
Amen. They follow me, we salute our nation's flag. Ready, salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flyer of United States of America and to the people of which this chair is. One nation under God, indivisible, and infinite.
Hey, very good. Okay, we're going to go to unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the addenda or any other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Uh, two minutes are allowed for each item.
I have no written correspondence, but the first speaker is Dr. Lisa Lewis.
Morning, Dr. Lewis.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, and welcome Supervisor Thayer this morning.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Pastor Thayer.
Pastor Thayer. Good morning. I'd like to update you on a couple of important initiatives this morning, but before I do, I'd also like to, uh, announce to your board, the promotion of Kristi Labkey from Deputy Director to Assistant Director of Kings County Behavioral Health. Kristi brings eighteen years of experience both in administration and behavioral health services to this new role. And we are very honored and thrilled to have her joining us in this capacity. I'd also like to, uh, thank administration and HR for helping us in the creation of this role, because this is also a new role in our department. But thank you. Okay, I'd like to move forward with a couple of updates, first on Care Court. On December first, twenty twenty-four, Kings County Behavioral Health and Kings County Superior Court launched the CARE Act. The program was launched, uh, in all California counties by the state through Senate Bill thirteen thirty-eight as an additional support for engagement of adults eighteen years of age or older who have schizophrenia or other psychotic disorders who may be struggling to engage in outpatient mental health services. The program allows individuals such as family members, support persons, first responders, or treatment providers to assist individuals with schizophrenia or psychotic disorders who are struggling to engage in treatment by petitioning the local civil court, um, to initiate engagement through the CARE Act program. By an individual such as a family member or a first responder, uh, petitioning the court, the local civil court can, uh, work with, uh, in coordination with the county behavioral health department to connect the, with the individual and provide, uh, behavioral health assessment, treatment, and housing as appropriate and as the person is eligible. Individuals can find petition information on Kings County Behavioral Health, uh, cbh.org website and, and can assist, um, and can be assisted by the Kings County Superior Court Self-Help Center in how to file a petition. A press release went out to the media last week and was posted on the county's social media pages. A copy of that press release is also made available to the public, uh, on the public comment table and was given to the clerk of the board for you this morning. As of today, the department, um, and the courts are working on our first petition for the CARE Act, um, process. We look forward to assisting individuals, um, through this process in the future. Additionals, additional individuals. Additionally, the behavioral health, uh, bridge housing is something I wanted to update you on this morning. As a support to the CARE Act, the department went after a grant for provision of behavioral health bridge housing and was awarded that grant, and the bridge housing is being carried out by Kings Community Action Organization, who are transitioning twenty-seven units at the Holiday Lodge on East Lacey into bridge housing. Bridge housing is a critical component of the housing continuum, uh, providing short-term transitional housing to individuals immediately transitioning from the street or from shelters, uh, into a stable and supportive environment where they are assisted in preparing for locating and then transitioning into additional, additional housing, moving into permanent supportive housing. This bridge housing prioritizes those enrolled in Care Court who may have housing assistance as part of their care plan or care agreement. Thirteen of the twenty-seven units have been opened as of January thirteenth, twenty twenty-seven, and KCAL will be hosting a ribbon cutting ceremony in the opening, in the coming week or two. The additional fourteen units are anticipated to be open in April. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Kristi, you have anything you want to add to that, to that today?
She is our next speaker.
Um, yeah, I wanted to.
And you can raise the stand up.
Say a few, I know, it always feels weird though, because I'm like.
It's kind of slow.
Yeah, so I'll just bend down to avoid the awkward moment that just occurred. Um, I just, thank you for, um, allowing me to continue developing my career here in Kings County. It is my hometown since I was fourteen. My dad was stationed, um, at Lemoore Naval Air Station, retired there. Um, he was stationed there first way back in the, um, in the seventies where he met my mom and they got married. Um, she's a Lemoore, uh, native, um, and, uh, then we returned here in retirement. So, um, I'm just glad to be able to continue bringing, uh, forth whatever I can to help, um, my hometown as well as professionally grow here, um, through Kings County, which has fantastic benefits. So I do want to give an update, um, as well on a couple of programs that also, uh, launched over the last month. So I wanted to give an update on the call center and the mobile crisis program. So it did launch December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Um, so it is a twenty-four seven, um, call center, so available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week, three hundred and sixty-five days out of the year. Um, the call center is not just for crisis, but it's for access and warm lines. So what that means is anybody in the county who is looking for behavioral health assistance can call that number twenty-four seven, and they'll have trained call operator professionals answer the phone and be able to link them in whatever capacity they, uh, their needs are. So if they, um, need to know about services in our community or county, or access county behavioral health services, they will be helped in linking in that manner. If they just need somebody to talk to, they will also be linked with the twenty-four, um, hour, seven day a week warm line, which is operated by peers who are there just to listen for individuals who want somebody to talk to that aren't in crisis, as well as if they are in crisis, they will be linked with the mobile crisis program, who then will respond out in the field to where that individual is experiencing crisis. So that launched December thirty-first. They've already had, um, well over a hundred calls and, and done mobile crisis dispatch. In fact, they had, um, one call, they, um, dispatched two, where the family had called about a loved one that was in crisis. They were able to de-escalate the situation. Um, the next day, they actually went out again and was able to continue to further support that family, um, through the crisis that was occurring. So, um, we're just really, um, uh, thankful for all of the efforts that, and supports here at the Board of Supervisors, as well as through the, the Crisis Collaborative Team, which is comprised of like the sheriff's office, local law enforcement, the emergency room, all of our behavioral health and substance use disorder providers and other various, um, uh, community brokers and, and public entities. So, um, we're excited for that. Um, CBS forty-seven and KC twenty-four did an interview, um, yesterday with, uh, uh, Kingsview, who is operating the program, as well as with Dr. Lewis and I, and that is now, um, on air to further kind of, um, promote, um, the service, as well as we'll be doing an interview on Tuesday with, um, ABC thirty. And so however we can promote that, the flyer has been handed out to you, as well as is on the back table. It's also been released, um, on the county's social media pages. So thank you for, um, putting it on your, your pages, and we'll continue to promote that in whatever way we can.
And that phone number is two four seven help.
That's, that's right. Five five nine two four seven help. Um, and then also to, um, give an update on something that happened in December. So as we've been coming to the board, talking about B chip round one, so the application didn't go in, but it was a sole application through Good Samaritan Hospital. So instead of being a public-private partnership with the county, there was other various intricacies that needed to be, um, discussed, and the timing of the, the application really didn't allow for those discussions to take place. So Good Samaritan Hospital did a sole application, and the location that they applied for is the empty lot between the Lacey Medical Plaza, um, on Lacey and, um, Kings County Drive and where the old Kings County Behavioral Health, uh, uh, services were. So it's right across from, uh, the old courthouse. And so that's the lot that they'll be continuing to develop, um, for the same services. So it's going to be adult, um, crisis stabilization unit, uh, crisis residential treatment facility and, um, psychiatric health facility, um, there at that location. So just a, a couple of blocks down from where it was originally planned, but for the same services. They'll know in May if they were awarded, so fingers crossed they get awarded, and we can have these services brought to Kings County. During that time though, in May, we also anticipate that round two will be released. And so we've already, um, begun discussions with, uh, county admin and other county departments on, um, how that's going to look. Uh, but we don't know exactly what the details are, because the state hasn't released the details of that application yet. Thank you.
Very good, thank you.
The next speaker is Rebecca Bell.
Morning Rebecca. How are you today?
Little concerned.
Okay.
Um, I wanted to say thank you to the fire department for helping with the fires down in, in Los Angeles. Um, but it has created also an outpouring of support from people, um, with supplies, food, clothing, lodging, and everything like that. But it has also drawn the undesired attention to businesses that are fleecing people by raising up the prices of food, gas, and lodging. Now, what does Kings County have to do with this? Um, Hamford actually has received some of them, some of the people from Los Angeles fleeing the fires. Now, although my friend hasn't been able to coordinate with all of them, there was actually one that made, um, a reservation. She was using a traveling site. She made it from the wrong date. She was actually supposed to be here last week, but she ended up making the reservations for this week. So when she came to the hotel, she wasn't able to get it. Of course, everybody knows that when you use the travel sites, it's a lot less than when you get it from directly. However, she, I mean, she wasn't expecting to get it at the exact price, but she was hopefully able to, if she spoke to the manager, told her her plight, that he would kind of get it at least close to it. But unfortunately, it also got the unwanted attention to where they actually doubled, more than doubled the price of that hotel room. So, and, um, that's, that's what I'm concerned about. Um, does Kings County have something to protect consumers against fleecing? No matter if there were to be a natural disaster, whether it's Los Angeles or anywhere in the Sequoias, and they were to go to these facilities for assistance? Is there some sort of consumer department to investigate? I, I know you guys can't do, can't solve problems if people don't come to you with it, but some people don't know that they can come to you guys with it, to have something done. But I was wondering if there is aid and consumer department to kind of make sure that these facilities aren't fleecing people for this, so that's.
I'm unaware of any, if it's a criminal, I could go through the district attorney's office, but, uh, until some criminal act or someone reports it, we can't do anything.
Uh-huh. So I, I know that if anybody in this room or anybody watching this video, if they can, if they or somebody that they know has been a victim of, a lot of people don't know where they can go, and they don't know that they can, or where, if they can. So kind of putting it out for, A, if you have been a victim, then you can trust you guys enough, because I, I do have faith in you guys to be able to help, because that's what you guys are supposed to do, so. But I have that faith, and I just want to thank the fire department for helping with it. And you guys hopefully kind of have people dot their i's and crosses their t's, so. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you Rebecca.
That's the last speaker card I have. It doesn't appear anyone online has their hand raised.
Nobody online, anybody in the audience want to add to it? Nothing? Okay, we'll go on now to the next item, which is approval of minutes. Uh, report out of closed session for the regular meeting from January seventh, twenty fifth, twenty twenty-five.
Thank you Chair, there's nothing to report out of closed session from that meeting on January seventh. However, before the board considers approving the minutes from that meeting, we need to note the following change to those minutes under section three, the board reorganization. The motion should, the, the item should state, a motion was made by Supervisor Neves to nominate Supervisor Robinson as chairman. Prior to receiving a second, a substitute motion was made by Supervisor Robinson, seconded by Supervisor Neves to nominate Supervisor Verboen as chairman and Supervisor Robinson as vice chairman for twenty twenty-five. And close the nominations, that was passed by five vote. And then under section B, that language regarding a motion made by Supervisor Robinson, and then the rest of that sentence needs to be stripped. I have no revision.
Ms. Chair. I just want to comment, uh, good job counsel, because I looked that up when I left on the, uh, on the, uh, procedure, because you said that procedure-wise, the rules of orders, you take up the latest motion first. And I thought you were wrong, so, but you were right.
Oh, well, thank, thank you for that.
That's right, that's good.
Sucking up the second.
Okay, so, uh, item A, uh, nothing to report out. Item B, approval of the minutes from regular meeting, January seventh, twenty twenty-five, and it's going to be as amended.
As amended.
Supervisor Neves, motion Supervisor Robinson seconds. Madam Court, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert Thayer.
Yes, yes.
Five in favor. We will now, the consent counter, all items listed on a consent counter are enacted by one motion, unless a board member would like to vote on them separately. Do we have any comments on the, uh, dinner? Nothing?
So moved.
Uh, motion by Supervisor Neves, seconded by Supervisor Robinson. Do we have any questions in the audience? Ding, none, Madam Court, please call the roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
All right.
Doug Verboen.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Robert Thayer.
Yes.
Five in favor, thank you. Move on now to regular calendar, and we have administration, we have Ms. Keri Martine.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this report is a quarterly report by the Facility Activities at Kettelman Hills Waste Facility. The report will be given by a representative from Kim Waste, Mr. Bob Henry.
Mr. Bob Henry, good morning.
Thank you.
Good morning.
How are you today?
I'm wonderful, thank you. How's the board?
Very good. Okay. We were cold this morning.
A little cold.
A little frost on the windshield. Um, report period covers from October eighth through January thirteenth. Few, uh, few items this morning. October tenth, KHF was at the Kings County State of the County Event held at the Tachi. Uh, KHF was an event sponsor. October twenty-fourth, KHF was at, KHF was at the Kings County Public Safety Event held in Kettelman City. Uh, again, KHF was an event sponsor, and we also participated with an information booth. October twenty-sixth, it was a fun month. Uh, KHF at the Kettelman City Fall Festival held at the Community Center. We were a sponsor, we had an information and fun booth, and provided light plants for the event as it went past a little into the evening. October twenty-ninth, Kings County, uh, Environmental Health Services at KHF, monthly unannounced facility inspection, no violation, no area of concern. October eighth, KHF was at the Kettelman City Elementary School Carnival, so eighth grade carnival, uh, provided light plants for the event. November fifteenth, Kettelman City, or KHF was at the Kettelman City Foundation. KHF provided the seniors in town with a Thanksgiving luncheon. October nineteenth, Kings County Environmental Health Services at KHF, again, a monthly unannounced facility inspection, no violations, no area of concern. November twenty-sixth, Supervisor Valley's Operation Galvo Galvo. These were turkeys for needy families in Kettelman City at Thanksgiving. KHF was a sponsor and helped, uh, assisted with the distribution of the turkeys. Along with us were the Fire Department and Sheriff's Department as well. So it was a nice event. December tenth, Kings County Environmental Health Services back out at KHF, monthly unannounced inspection, no violation, no area of concern. November, December sixteenth, Kings County, KHF at Kings County Economic Development Corporation. KHF is a new member of the Board of Directors. December twentieth, KHF at the Kettelman City Foundation. KHF provided the seniors in town with the Christmas luncheon. Give you an idea, that's about sixty folks that come out, fifty-five and older, about sixty people come out. And we'll have events, we'll have the luncheon, and then we'll have some events for the seniors, usually some type of, of gift at the Christmas one. So it turns out really nice.
Fifty-five and over or sixty-five and over?
Fifty-five.
You fit, I guess.
Be next one.
Make sure you save some of them Thanksgiving turkeys for the Christmas.
There we go. Future activities, uh, K, January twentieth, KHF will be closed in remembrance of Martin Luther King Junior Day. Uh, February fourteenth, KHF, the Kettelman City Foundation. KHF provided the seniors in town with the Valentine's Day Luncheon. So they try to keep them with some type of theme permitting. All right, DTSC's Part B permit renewal to the tentative schedule. DTSC to respond to public comments. If you remember, we had the public, or they held the public hearing, public meeting, public hearing, uh, in the last summer. They put on their website that they will be making a permit decision in March of this year. So I'm assuming it'll be favorable. Uh, the draft permit went out, so it's looking like it will be issued, uh, favorably. There will be a thirty-day appeal period. So during that appeal period, the permit is not in, uh, doesn't take effect for thirty days after it's been approved. During that thirty days, it can be appealed. I haven't had a permit yet that wasn't appealed, but there's always a first. If it is not appealed during that thirty-day period, then it would go into effect. Okay, so we might have a permit as early as the first of April, or early April. Or if it goes to appeal, it would go to the, um, uh, Board of Environmental Safety, which is the DTSC Board, and then they would have to hear it. It would not go through the old method, which would go to DTSC, and then they would have a, a board that they would establish to review it. Now it would go to the Environmental Safety Board, which was set up by the governor. So, um, that board is taking six months to a year to hear permits, but I'm not sure how long it would take. Ours is kind of a high profile. So anyway, they're, but it published, DTSC published, we would have a permit somewhere in March, and then appeal potentially, and then go to board for, uh, review. That's kind of what I'm thinking. I'm thinking probably August, maybe surprised and get it in April, but I'm thinking somewhere around August. So, and that would be our DTSC operating permit. That's our ten-year operating permit to continue, continue business. Okay, it's not asking for, um, a new landfill or anything like that. It's just asked for continuing our operations. Okay?
That's it?
That's it.
Oh, thank you very much.
It was short and sweet today.
Any questions, uh, for Bob from the board?
I do, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
I guess first, just as a reminder, maybe can I help educate me myself a little bit about this? How many places like Kim Waste operate in the state of California and/or the, the US?
In the state, there's two. We have, uh, Waste Management's, Chemical Waste Management, Kettelman Hills Facility. Similar facility is ran by Clean Harbors in Buttonwillow, which is in Kern County. So fairly similar permits, DTSC is trying to make the permits even closer, which is a good thing. I'll take, I'll, I'll work with competition, just as long as we're at an, an even playing field. Okay? Out of state, you have, um, well, it's, it was USA Ecology, now it's Republic, who has a facility in Southern Cal, uh, Southern Nevada, Beatty, Nevada. Okay, and it can take in materials, RICRA materials, uh, TOSCA materials. Okay, competition. So Kettelman is RICRA, Resource Conservation Recovery Act federally, um, regulated materials. TOSCA, your PCBs, so you can take both those in landfill. State regulated, which would be your non-RICRA materials. And then we can also take in, in an ISW, non-particiable, non-haz industrial solid waste, that's into our haz landfill. We also have the MSW landfill that'll take in, uh, MSW and then some, um, materials that are not hazardous. They call them class twos. Class one haz, class two materials that threaten the waters of the state of California. Class three, your garbage, MSW. B seventeen, our MSW landfill, it's class two-three, so we can take cover soils in. We're doing that right now. We're taking, an example would be from CRC. We're taking in about fifteen thousand tons of, not all in one day, within our daily permit, permit limit, but we're taking in cover soil. So we'll put the trash down, we'll use tarps, and then we'll use soil as it becomes available, let's say through CRC, uh, or others, and then we will also take it from stockpile. On the haz side, class one would be your hazardous waste, which would be your RICRA, your TOSCA. In the state of California, it would be your non-RICRA hazardous waste. That's the specialty. Okay, other states do not have that. And then again, the NISW. So RICRA, this competing facilities would be Kettelman to Buttonwillow in the state, and then also USA Ecology over in Beatty, Nevada. That's where most of the RICRA will end up. You also have materials that can be treated, RICRA materials that are different codes, D codes, F codes, K codes, U codes, P codes. D codes are characteristic because of material inside the waste. So if it's lead, it's a high enough level that it makes it characteristic, where like an F code is a process generator than weight, generating the waste. So you have those. So now with the decoded materials, you have portable treatment units. TT is where they'll treat the materials on site, and then they may bring them to us if they brought it from a RICRA level to a non-RICRA level. Okay? What's happening right now that y'all need to be aware of is Board, Board of Environmental Safety has asked for information. Uh, they're all going out and asking for this information from DTSC. So what is happening is that non-RICRA material, if you take it to Arizona, you can put it in a subtitle D landfill, C, chemical landfill, D for your MSW landfills or your class two-three. So they can take it out of state, and they can dispose of it there. And nor, that would be Southern California mainly. Northern California, you have a hazardous waste transfer station in the city of, uh, San Francisco downtown by the ballpark. Okay? What they will do there is they will take materials from, a lot of the material that's haz, a non-RICRA hazardous waste in the bay is coming from the earthquake fill. But there's other materials, but the larger projects, earthquake, where you're building a new facility, you, whatever you dig up for the foundation, you have to dispose of. That's jumping on a train and going to Utah. Okay, that would go to East Canyon, ECDC, East Carbon, um, disposal corporation. So it goes to, goes over there. Republic owns that one, Republic owns the one in Nevada, Republic owns the two landfills in Arizona. And that would be trying to take non-RICRA out of the state. RICRA out of state would go to USA Ecology. TOSCA would go to US, USA Ecology, or the Beatty. Tosca would go to US, US Ecology or the Beatty Facility, okay? What's happening right now is DTSC is looking at taking the non-Rickra contaminated soils and maybe allowing those to go to D landfills that have a liner system. That would take materials out of Kettleman and maybe leave them in the city, it might go to an Altamont landfill, which is located in the Bay Area. It may take it to a El Sabrante, San Bernardino County, it may take it to a Simi Valley landfill, Ventura County. It may stay to help reduce carbon footprint and because they have D landfills, subtitle D, the liner systems. But it would only be a subset of the non-Rickra material. But again, it would be that subset where it would be metal impacted soils, let's say you have a roadway that has lead impacted soil. Aerial deposit from cars, what have you, that might be either allowed by Caltrans to put it under the road, or they may be able to take it to a local landfill versus coming down here. What does that mean for you? You have a ten percent revenue tax on me, so if I'm getting paid fifty a ton, you're getting five dollars a ton. That volume falls off, that will fall off for you guys. Is that more than you wanted this morning?
There's gonna be a ten later. Okay, so how many are in California?
Two.
One in Nevada.
Yes.
So the second question is, and I don't, I don't know, I'm just kind of curious with, you know, with these wildland fires California's had, both from Northern California, now obviously what's going down in the Palisades, Los Angeles, do you expect to receive any of that? Does that type of material end up here in Kettleman City?
I've had discussions, we have, I have a sales force in Southern California, Central California, Northern California. And what that, what those folks do is they're keeping their ear to the ground, typically we'll take in a cleanup project or maybe event waste or production waste, okay? So corporation generates some type of material that's hazardous, they'll take care of that. If there's a cleanup because somebody's building or just a base is being cleaned up, whatever it might be, they have their ears, ears out there and we're looking to bring that material in. With my discussions last week with the Southern California bunch, we have, we're looking, well, they've already gone through and they've made changes to their permit to take additional volumes, fire debris with CalRecycle into our El Sabrante landfill in San Bernardino, the Simi one I talked about as well. We have a few others down there that we will be working Lancaster, Palmdale, others where we'll be taking fire debris. Now, the problem is with the fire debris, you're only going to be able to handle so much with the equipment, so we'll have to, we've already had folks coming out to, let's say our Simi landfill where we're expanding the number of lanes that we're going to be able to receive trucks, so we're at eight lanes coming into the facility. So it's going to be quite a bit of material, you're probably twelve thousand tons a day and you're going to jump that up. It could be, we've done the wool, what they call it, the woolly fire a few years back and we had to jump it up and we were able to handle it. Now, you're talking devastation in LA right now in a lot of homes. Home usually runs about seventy-five tons, depending on the size of course, but about seventy-five tons a home. But when you see twelve thousand, twelve thousand homes that burn Palisades or whatever, I think, what is it, seven fires right now, something like that? So you have, you have thousands of homes being destroyed, that material will need to go. Now, CalRecycle, I would assume would go in there, such as they've done with some of the other fires that we've worked on in Northern California. They'll go in and look for the hazardous waste, with that hazardous waste, they'll segregate that out. A lot of it that's gone through the fire, it's been incinerated, so you don't have a lot of hazardous waste coming out, but you may have some. That would get pulled out, go to a facility like Kettleman or Buttonwillow. But the balance then would most likely go for a little bit of recycling. That's metals that will come out, not a lot, and then the balance would go to the subtitle Ds with the variance. Now, what they may be looking at there with that variance when they go in is there may be some decoded materials, because you're not going to, the process generating the waste was a fire. But the material itself, if it's at a, the constituents are high enough, the lead's high enough, it would be haz. If it was Cal haz, they may make an exception and let it stay in the D, D landfill. If it's too high, they may say it needs to come to the sea, if it went out of non-Rickra to Rickra, they would make it come up here, or one of the two facilities. Fire debris, I've taken it from over in Eastern Tulare County, a couple of years last last year, I think it was. So I've taken fire debris in the past, I don't see that a lot of fire debris will be coming up here. You do have a pretty significant issue with Chiquita Canyon landfill, it's a Waste Connections landfill. They've slowed that operation way down, they had some issues with the landfill. That trash has been diverted to other landfills in Southern California, but it was a big landfill, it's ten thousand plus, ten thousand tons a day plus. So that's been diverted to some of the other landfills, so those landfills are starting to get hit their tonnage limits and they've had to ask for increases already for MSW. Materials are pushing out to Palmdale, Lancaster, and what we're going to, with the fire debris, I'm assuming that it's going to push out to Palmdale, Lancaster. I don't believe it'll push up here. Now, with Waste Connections, they're already hauling materials from Southern California to Avonel. Their tonnage is up.
Yeah.
And what, Quora Board now?
Say what?
Are you on the Quora Board now?
No. Am I? I don't know. He will be in a few minutes.
He will.
Yeah, he's not there yet, but he's going to be there in a few minutes.
So you have materials coming up, Waste Connections, customers, they're having to have their waste disposed of, they can't get into Chiquita, they're coming up to Avonel. So that's causing traffic jams over, over there, if you want somebody behind me to tell you about it. So anyway, you have traffic, you have that issue going on, so you have materials coming from LA, garbage coming to Avonel already. There may be an issue where with fire debris, if they cannot handle it, I'm like ninety-nine percent sure it's going to stay in LA. So I would think fire debris will stay in LA, the LA landfills, the basin. Garbage do you do have coming up, but that was a different issue with Chiquita Canyon, so.
Okay, thank you, thanks for the education. That's all I had, Mr. Chair.
Hey, thank you, do we have any other questions from the board? Do we have any questions from the audience? Saying that, I'll bring it back to the board for direction.
So movement, Chair.
By the Nevs, second by Robinson, Madam Clerk, please follow the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson? Robert Thayer?
Yes.
I'm favorite, thank you, Mr. Henry, very good.
Thank you.
We know a lot more about hazardous track, hazardous waste though.
Yeah, that, that could.
Interesting how fast they're able to clean that area up, it's a tight area, it's congested already. And now you got big trucks going in there hauling stuff out, we're talking years of work. And they're going to find all the stuff.
The demo work will be fairly quick. I mean, you're looking at, you know, say three trucks, three end dumps per home on average. So I believe that'll move quickly and that'll go local landfills, so once the contractors, I have a lot of contractors I work with that they're they're moving some of the earlier fires from this year, which is really amazing, or from last year. It's really amazing that they're moving that quickly, usually it's a delayed from CalRecycle to get the funding, to get, you know, get it awarded. Go up to bid, get it awarded, get it all through the process, it takes usually months and months. They've shortened that now with this kind of disaster, I don't know if they're going to give more leeway to LA County, LA, or the cities in LA to get this thing moving quicker. But you're just not going to have enough trucks, there's just not enough, they don't plan for this, so. Supervisor's there, if you'd like to tour, let me know.
Sure, yeah.
Okay.
Let's come up.
Supervisor Verboen?
Take the county helicopter out there and drop us off.
Sounds like a good thing. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on now to administration and we have Kerry Martinez again, consider approving twenty twenty-five board and committee assignments.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman, so each year the Board of Supervisors formally approves the board and committee assignments for the year, each supervisor was given an opportunity to review and revise any assignments as needed. So at this time, the recommendation is to approve the twenty twenty-five board and committee assignments.
Any questions or comments from the board, any changes? No? Any regrets? No?
Regrets?
A motion by Supervisor Robinson to approve is presented.
Second.
Second by Supervisor Thayer. Madam Clerk, please follow the roll. Any questions from the audience? Saying then, Madam Clerk, please follow the roll.
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valley? Doug Verboen?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Richard, I did it again, Robert Thayer.
Two for two.
Yes.
Favor, and I am asking the board, at the board level to, question for the audience, I was giving a little cheat sheet here, so on all items in the future, we'll ask the board for a comment and we'll ask the audience for comments as well, so. We're going to change it up a little bit, we got a new council that's giving me direction, so I'll be going to the audience every time for every item to ask for input, if anybody has a comment, so. That's why it's a little different for me today, so, thank you. We'll move on now to board member announcements and reports, so who wants to go first? Supervisor Robinson?
Let's see, yesterday I attended the Kings and Tulare Area on Aging Meeting with Supervisor Thayer.
And you just had a birthday, so you fit in.
I almost, I almost fit in, I'm fifty-four now. It was, it was a nice visit to the Community Center out in Lindsay. So they, normally we meet at the Connections Building in Visalia, but every once in a while they'll mix it up and go to the senior center, so it's nice to get out there with the seniors. There was a few that were there in attendance and, and so good to get out there. Also, last night I met with the Sons of Liberty, just to see if they had any questions or anything, so I, I did answer questions for a little while last night. My prayers go out to the folks down in Los Angeles with, with the fires, my college roommate, his, his house burned to the ground. And so I've been in contact with him a lot lately, offering my help. Also, I spoke to Samir Sheik from the Airboard, just, just to make sure that, that the wildfires aren't going to have an impact here. And at this point, he says probably not, most of those winds are blowing out over the ocean, that could change, there's a possibility, but, but unlikely in his opinion at this point.
That's it?
That's it.
One more year, you get an AARP card.
Is that right?
Yeah, they can talk about you at those meetings.
Very good.
Good. Supervisor Valley?
I still can't get over the fact that you're younger than me, I thought I was the youngest guy on the board.
You looked older ago.
Yeah, well, thanks to my, thanks to my desk.
How old are you?
I'm fifty-four, but in July, so, yeah, 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 man, okay. Only thing I have as chair is I want to thank Jose Ramirez, come to Corcoran. Last Tuesday evening, we had a sunset, I redid my swearing in there in my hometown of Corcoran, came in, delivered the oath of office and our district attorney, Sarah Hacker, she was there, Supervisor Thayer, came in, reps from around the the county came, it was a nice ceremony, I appreciate his time and everyone who came.
Supervisor Thayer?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, as, as Supervisor Valley said, I went down and watched his swearing in ceremony, down at the Five Pillars. Beautiful, beautiful landscape down there, nice little bicycle park right there next door to it too, I've been by it many times, I can't say I ever recognized it was actually a bicycle park, but saw some kids out there riding on it and in a pretty neat little facility there. Wednesday, I had the opportunity to zoom in with both our state and federal lobbyists and kind of went over what Kings County's, this board's approved ledge platform is and then, and then spoke some of my own side thoughts into two issues that are important to me. I, I was able to meet with Wendy Osakoff, she got me up to date on what's going on with the Triangle, the Triangle Court Project. Thursday, I got to meet with our CIO Kerry Martinez that got me up to date on many things that are, that are going on within the county, impacting the county, et cetera. Friday, with Dana Wild from KT AAA, I'm now an official committee member on that, and, and it was like drinking water from a fire hose, meeting with her on, on, on what KT AAA is, and then as Supervisor Robinson said yesterday. We met out in Lindsay for KT AAA, I didn't have any voting rights, so I just sat and, and watched, but I was actually, it was really encouraging to see the number of people that come together for this population, our senior population, and, and I think sometimes they go missed by our communities because we don't see them out, and, and it was encouraging to see a bunch of people who have hearts for this and, and look forward to helping how I can. I, I, I think I might become the vice chair and we'll see next, whenever our next meeting is.
I could miss a meeting.
I know. But, but look, look forward to, to getting rolling with that of, of my committee assignments, that's the first one that I've kind of been introduced to, and so looking forward to gearing up and going on with these other committee assignments and seeing what we can do to help our locals, so that, thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Nev.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, continue to approve water well permits for the South Fork Kings, a couple of them last week. Attended the Central Valley Chapter of the Moving and Storage Association, January meeting that was held at the Tatch Palace, moving and storage policies. And rates are set by the federal government, especially with military personnel, and they are really behind on that, and I have a couple of grandsons that are in the army. And they've kind of experienced some of that as far as the, the, the storage when they go on deployment, as well as the the fees to cost when they get reassigned to a different station. But, so they continue to work with that and, and the personnel and the operators are really challenged a little bit with that, with that service. And continue to announce basketball games at Lemoore College, with that, thank you very much.
Thank you. Last Tuesday, I traveled up to R C R C meeting, it was all day Wednesday, and then Wednesday evening, we had, we sworn our new officers, so we had Jerry Byrne sworn in from Modoc County. And then Miles Bagentry will be our second vice, second chair, he's from Mariposa, then Bob Nelson from Santa Barbara. Did that, also spent some time over at Assembly Member Alexa Alexandra Macedo, talked about the issue of our county, along with Supervisor Dennis Townsend from Tulare County. Kind of jumbled up together, we have the same issue, so do it two in one time, two at one time, so. With that, that's all I have, I think, we'll go ahead and go to upcoming agenda items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, so for board correspondence, the board received a few letters dated December nineteen from the Board of State Community Corrections regarding a corrective action plan verification for the Kings County Juvenile Hall. The board received correspondence dated December sixteenth from the Board of State Community Corrections regarding the comprehensive inspection of the Kings County Sheriff's Office Detention Facility. And lastly, the board received another letter from the Board of State Community Corrections regarding the Kings County Sheriff Detention Facility. The board received on January tenth, the Chemical Waste Management Regarding Public Notice of Intent to Modify Hazardous Waste Permit. The board received correspondence from Tulare Kings Hispanic Chamber of Commerce dated January sixth regarding invitation of the annual awards ceremony, which will take place January seventeen. The board received the following correspondence from the Kings County Director of Finance, the monthly fund balance report for November twenty, November twenty twenty-four, the Kings County Treasury Report Cash Investment for November twenty twenty-four. And the Kings County Investment Pool Portfolio Management Summary from November twenty twenty-four. For upcoming events, Behavior Health will host its Veteran Support Group tonight, Tuesday, January fourteenth from five thirty to seven thirty at the Veterans Memorial Hall in Hanford. Kings County Behavior Health will host its Mental Health Family Member Support Group next Tuesday, January twenty-first from five thirty to seven thirty here on campus. And lastly, Kings County Library will host its Family Craft Time next Thursday, January twenty-third from three thirty to four thirty PM. For the upcoming agenda items, the following agenda items are for January twenty-eighth, board meeting of January twenty-first is canceled due to the Martin Luther King Holiday. Administration has two items, Public Safety Realignment, Community, Community Supervision Twenty Twenty Four Plan. And Ad Commissioner has a cooperative agreement with Department of State of Food and Agricultural Pest. And an item on some detection programs, District Attorney has an agreement for some investigations, a resolution proclaiming January of National Human Trafficking Awareness Month. And Health has three items, the Kaiser Foundation sponsorship for the WIC program and a rollover agreement for emergency preparedness grant funding. An agreement with the Laboratory for Wastewater Collection, Human Resources has one item on a contract amendment for Mutual Life Insurance Company, and that concludes my report, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much, one thing I forgot to add, which is kind of exciting, on R C R C board, we sat on three different boards, one's called Golden State Connect, which is a rural broadband. And so we had applied as a board here for money for the Lata Grant. And we pulled out after about a week because we found out we had to be the provider and we had a bond to come up with an equal match to what we got from the FFA grant. So we switched it and then last week, we were granted fifty-four million dollars to Kings County, to Comcast and AT&amp;T. And therefore, we don't have to have a match or bond, they finish it themselves, so we got that looking forward to us, the one that we're on. The ones that were on, uh, uh, Golden State Connect, we're kind of grumbling because they have to come up with a bond and have to come with, uh, matching money. So we did the right thing. I, I didn't bring it back to the board, I just pull it and pulled out. And so, uh, it worked out in our favor, so, uh, that's gonna be exciting. It's gonna be, uh, part of Hanford, Avonel and Kettleman, uh, where they're gonna put the, the fiber in. Uh, they like to have redundancy, even though we all have Starlink now out in the country. Uh, this is bringing a fiber to the doors of the, uh, lowly communities.
What they call the last mile.
Last mile, yeah. It's a lot of money for the last mile, which is, I think the, the Starlink is the best, best fit, but they, they say you need redundancy for the future. So, uh, we've been talking about this for fourteen years and so technology may change in the next fourteen, so. Not sure if this would be wasted money or good money. We'll, we'll have to wait and see.
When do we, when did we start, um, taking the meeting off for the World Ag Expo? We did that last year?
No, never done it.
Does Tulare County take off?
Yep.
They do?
They shut the schools down over there.
Yeah, I imagine that's in their county then. Why, why are we taking off for that, dude?
We were invited as a board supervisor.
Sandwich after the meeting? No, we get, we get no bologna. Bologna for you.
Barbecued bologna.
Yeah.
It's barbecued, it's not fried.
Okay, we'll go ahead now and we're gonna, uh, adjourn this meeting and go to closed session as outlined. And we'll be back here eleven o'clock for a Cal P F A meeting.
Mr. Chairman, if I could just, um, note for the record that item three, the litigation and lobby southern.